City of Sims, City Council Work Session Meeting is now called to order. Time is what?
3:01.
3:01. Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilwoman Watts.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Here.
Councilwoman Platt.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson's accent.
Very good. First item is the approval of the minutes from the previous work session council meeting. It's in your packet. Give you all a little time to look at that.
President, approve.
Take it, sir.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? Very good. The minutes from the previous work session council meeting are approved. Presentations, upcoming events. Ms. Denise Taylor.
How are y'all doing?
Hello.
Hello.
Our next events coming up on the 15th of September is P.O.W. through M.I.A. recognition day. And we're just gonna invite the public to come out to our park and sprinkle rose petals and reflect. And so I hope by the end of that day, we have rose petals all over the park for everyone to see as they come home. So, we're doing that in lieu of any type of formal event. Just, you know, a time of reflection and recognition. On the 25th of September is our Mobile Pops concert at MGM. And I have already hired a caterer and we are working on decorations and getting that all put together and publicizing it so that all of Sims knows that this is a free family event and expose ourselves to a little bit of culture and fun. So that's going on that night. And the next event we have coming up is the Municipal Association Dinner that Sims will host. Each city, you know, takes turns hosting the dinner. And Sims will host that on October 18th? 19th, on Thursday, October 19th. And I am busy getting door prizes and just little happy bags put together for everyone that comes. And I just put out a call for door prizes and I already have 16 people that have volunteered to produce something for us. So we have anything from gift cards to gift baskets to a month's free martial arts lessons. So, we've got great stuff going on that will bring people back into Sims to see all the lovely things we have and spend their money. So, that's what we've got going on right now. And National Night Out was a massive success. We had so many families and so many children that just had a lovely time with us. So, we're looking forward to doing that again next year.
Very good. Any questions, Mr. Smith?
No questions. Look forward to that pop concert.
Good. Mr. Webb?
None.
Platt?
No, sir.
As always, Denise, you do a great job.
Thank you, I'll have fun.
For being just, just great, you know, with what you do and putting these things together.
Thanks.
And it's just amazing.
I have, I have a really good time. I love my job. I love the city of Sims.
Thank you, thank you.
Very good. Moving on.
I love you and the city too.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next item is review of checks. Has everyone had a chance to look at the checks?
I think I looked at them.
Okay. We'll move those around. Give everybody a chance there.
Is everybody listening?
I don't know. No, we'll take a few minutes now and do that.
Can I comment or no, out loud?
Sure. If you have, yeah, and that's, and just a reminder, we have, yeah, if you have questions about these checks, this is the time.
Yeah, the Sims Budget Stabilization Fund, Howard, I guess you would be savvy to that, about $38,000?
Yes, this is something that was established a number of years ago. We take a percentage of our income each month and we put it in that account. And it's a budget stabilization that was to guard against the possibility we might run out of money.
Yeah, kind of drop things like hurricanes or all this.
Well, it's, it's for emergencies, basically, that's.
Yeah.
Good question.
Okay.
We're basically paying ourselves.
That's good. Is this all the Alabama League of Municipalities is just $250? Or is this just the start of it?
That would be the, is it the yearly? Let me see.
I think it's, that's, that's too, that's more than that.
That would be for the year. That's the annual fee we pay.
Oh, okay, I got you. Okay, it's not the dinner dinner area?
No.
Okay. Yeah, the Mobile League is the dinner.
Okay.
Alabama League is the state.
Okay. Yeah. Sorry, I'm asking.
No, that's good. That's what it's for. You asked away?
Unlike Councilman Ontario, if, if Howard has looked over, I know they're up there, I guess the Weaver is doing the construction on the road and such as that across the bridge or $63,000. Yeah, okay.
If I may ask, Mr. President, I'd like to know which strip of highway that paved or resurfaced, this particular payment, I don't know where it's going in our city, but I'd like to just be interested in which strip of.
Jason, are you prepared to elaborate on that?
I don't have the pay estimate front of me, but I can give you details of every estimate if you'd like. I don't have it in front of me.
Basically, yeah, these are, basically, we, it's an ongoing exchange. We're sending money in, they're sending money to us.
Um, if you'll look at the check details.
There's an estimate on.
Yeah, estimate number eight is for McCray Road intersection and also for some resurfacing projects we have going in. So it's a few things.
Very good, thank you. Right, it's all the details.
Is that, good?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that answer?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I know we have projects going all around.
We do, we have quite a few.
We have quite a few.
Yeah, and some of them require the city funds and then we get reimbursed and it's a kind of a never-ending process, circuitry. But we're getting there. Are we done with checks? Have you seen them? Mr. Webb?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're just, yeah. Okay, moving on. Review and discussion of proposed ordinances. This is just a discussion to look at these, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 separate ordinances by subdivision. Tyler, I guess we'll let you take the helm for your questions.
Yes, sir. Do you want me to go up there?
All right. Tyler's been working hard along with a lot of other people to get these annexation under control. So what he's gonna do is explain it to us. You have the floor.
All right, there should be 31 or 32 parcels and sweep areas. That's the first ordinance. I know Chris and Randy, they've been working together with Mr. Smith to try and, I guess, modify the way that we can get a group, like a subdivision, in under one ordinance and make things easier as a whole. And so this is our first time doing it this way. Jason and I went out yesterday to review, do a cost analysis on how much it would cost per year for maintenance and different things like that. There was a couple drainage issues that we'll have to take care of. I think a couple of the sidewalks had just very small places that would have to be fixed that way they became ADA compliant. But overall, I think it was around $3,500 to $4,000 per year annually. And that was just to factor in resurfacing when the time comes. The other areas are on McCray Road, a single parcel. There's two on Joella Road that we weren't able to annex last time because we were missing signatures. Mr. Smith was able to go out and get those. One on Lot Road at 5280F. There was one on Lynn Drive, which is off of Orchard, Orchard Ridge and Lynn Drive. And so they were able to, we should be able to hopefully finish paving the rest of that. We were able to do up to a certain portion in the past. But since the rest of the road wasn't in the city limits, we weren't able to finish out there. And I'm trying to think if there's any others. There's a couple in familiar place, right down the road. We were able to get two of three. One of them was very close, but it wasn't corner to corner. So we weren't able to annex. We weren't really good enough at the time. But the one in green and then the one across the street, 5240, we were able to annex them. So, everything at this point is contiguous. It should be 39 or 40 parcels, I believe.
Good.
And so, any questions?
Mr. Webb?
What? That's great.
Mr. Smith?
No question.
Mr. Webb?
Sounds good to me. Thank you very much.
Yeah, very good. Okay.
Like I said, none of this would have been possible without Chris, Randy, Mr. Smith, and Buddy, one of our guys.
Well, thank you to everyone, I think, and especially, I'm sure the council agreed. Thank you so much. For all your work.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
It was his idea on the multiple petition. That's a good way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
So we've already got, we're working on other areas in the future to get more neighborhoods in.
And we're keeping, you know, with an eye towards the census too.
Yes, sir.
And we talked about it yesterday, is, this is so important for us as we grow because these new businesses, corporations, restaurants, everything, they look at our census data. And if it's growing, they will come here.
Yes, sir.
So that's good. So thank you all for your help, everybody. Thank you. All right. Moving on to proposed resolutions, review and discussion. The first one is item 7A, which is disposition of certain surplus or unneeded city personal property. I believe this is the pumper truck. Okay. And Captain Mack is here to discuss that, just to give you an overview before he gets into the details of the pumper truck. This is a 2000 truck.
Yes.
Yeah, you want to come on up? This is a 2000 truck and Captain Mack is, is an expert on it. He's gonna tell us why we need to move on.
This is gonna be a 2004 E1 pumper truck and basically, we have, as an agency, have outgrown this apparatus. It's a two-man cab, which does not carry the air packs that we carry inside the cab now. Some of the storage is very, very limited. Its dependability is not there. There are issues with the performance John as far as pumping water to the fire. And it's, you know, it's 2000, so it's 17 years old and it's just, it was a good starter truck at the time, but for the agency, that was here before. It worked out well for them, but since we have outgrown it and its dependability is just not there, is there a liable reserve truck for us? So, we are electing to sell it and you wanted to discuss the reserve and what we listed for as a reserve or?
We haven't discussed.
Our reserve that we have placed on it was $30,000. And this is gonna be our reserve.
And if this truck is approved for sale, this money would be used to purchase other items for the.
Yes, it would go back into our budget and give us with some updated items that we need, some tools and make everything unified across the board as far as our fleet goes. Be able to enhance some of the extrication equipment that we already have. Part of it, we got through the grant that we did last week and just, we're just going to enhance that and give us what we need.
Okay.
Any questions? I'll be glad to answer.
Mr. Platt?
No, sir.
Mr. Webb?
None.
Mr. Smith?
No questions.
Mr. Watts? Okay. Thank you. The next item, B and C are together. This is authorizing agreement between the City of Sims and Aldott relating to a tap project. And this is, these are two projects we talked about before. These are the sidewalk projects, correct? So, questions? You have the paperwork in front of you, but if you have questions, I can answer them. Jason knows quite a bit about it. He's involved in it from day one. Question, Mr. Smith?
Question.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Webb?
None.
Mr. Platt?
One question, Jason. How much longer have we got on this sidewalk project in your estimation? Is this gonna finish it up or?
This is gonna get us, this is two new projects. It's gonna get us from Fire Tower Road to the Walmart.
Oh.
So up here. So it'll be two different sections. One will be a multi-use path, which is eight or nine feet wide. And the other one will be a regular sidewalk that is five to six feet wide.
Okay.
So this has nothing to do with the previous two that we've done.
Do you have any plans after this one?
Yeah, we want to continue to do them as, as long as we can get the grants for it because we're getting 80-20 money. So it's a, it's a pretty good deal. But we have an overall master plan for sidewalks and it kind of ties in the whole city with all the subdivisions in the city. So eventually, we'd like, or I would like to have everything walkable. I think that's the end goal.
Oh, yeah.
If that'll work out or, we're working that way. Trying to get the main trunk line done and then we'll tie into it. That's, that's my plan.
Is that like a fairhoet?
I'm not sure.
It's got a lot of sidewalk, you know, stuff going on.
Yeah, probably so. It's probably the same type of grant.
Real friendly type, you know, being able to walk, you know, not walk in a ditch.
Right.
Very good. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. What, what does the city's cost on this sidewalk from Walmart to?
I believe it was, off the top of my head, it was, the project was like $250 a piece of $500,000, so 20% of that, so about $100,000 for a $500,000 project.
I'm opposed to a sidewalk from Walmart to?
Well, thanks, that cuts through my property in just a fence, so I.
That's a waste of money there. My favorite opinion. Don't talk back.
Any other questions, comments? Anyone? Okay. Moving along to 97C. This is an authorizing agreement between the City of Sims and Government Revenue Solutions. This is RDS. These are the good people who collect our sales tax for us. This contract is for three years. The one that we have currently is about to expire. RDS, from my perspective, they've done a good job. They've been helpful, they're easy to contact, and we're open for discussion and comments. Mr. Smith?
Let's see, I don't have a reference here to what the previous percentage is. Is this the same percentage as we do?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 1.85%.
Mm-hmm.
That costs money, but I think it basically pays for itself. Certainly, I believe it costs more money than we're paying. To get the same job done, probably take a kind of office full of people to do all that. So, I think it's a good deal.
Okay. Mr. Watts?
No question.
About RDS?
What is the amount of money of 1.8% for revenue collected?
Is there a fee that's listed in?
This is just for rental taxes. This agreement is just specific to rental taxes that we collect in the city. That can be anything from rented vehicles to.
Hotels.
Well, we have a lodging.
Lodging.
But, I mean, it's, it's a large variety of things, but we, we do collect a good debt of rental taxes in the city. And they get 1.85% of that collected. And I, it varies depending on the kind of.
A reasonable fee, huh?
Oh, yeah.
I believe it's less than the state would charge for the same function. Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Platt?
I'm good.
Okay. Moving on. Black Star Alternative Transportation Service. This is for our debiter later machines. And this is, as I understand, Captain, the certification for the.
Yes, it's to keep the machines certified.
Okay.
So we use those on rescue and we have it out amongst the city in different locations. And this is to keep them maintained and certified.
Okay. And when will this be conducted if it's approved?
Probably within two weeks after.
And how long of time do you get when you re-certify?
For the year.
For the year.
For the year.
Very good. Mr. Smith, questions?
No questions.
Mr. Watts? Webb, question?
None.
Mr. Platt?
No, sir.
Okay. Very good. Moving on. Authorizing agreement between the City of Sims and the Mobile Sonic Pops Band for performing at an Evening with the Pops concert. I think you're all fairly familiar with this. We've done this as a city for the past four years, I guess, four or five? Four or five years. As you know, this concert is held at Mary Jean Montgomery High School Auditorium. It is open to the public. It's free parking, free concerts, food afterwards. This year, we're jumping on the bandwagon pretty quick in terms of getting advertisements out. We're gonna talk to some of the local churches to assist us with transportation for some of the people who may be challenged in terms of getting there. Want to try to make this as painless as possible. So it should be a wonderful event. We're looking forward to it. It's on a Monday night, so we're trying to avoid football. We didn't avoid Monday night football, but you should be able to get home for the second half if you're a Monday night football person. But it should be a fun night out. Are there questions or comments? Mr. Smith?
Look forward to this concert again and I just hope we fill the hall. Makes it so much better.
I agree with that. Mr. Watts?
My two grandsons, I gotta put a plug in for them.
Good.
One grandson plays bass drum.
Uh-huh.
And then my other grandson, he plays tenor sax. So he, I know they appreciate that from MGM.
That's great. Mr. Webb, questions, comments?
None.
Mr. Platt?
No, sir.
Very good. Moving on. This is an authorizing expenditure funds for the concert. Let's see. One is for advertising the concert, correct?
Let's see, the first one was specifically for the Pops. We paid them $1,500. And this one is for advertising and rental at the auditorium.
Okay. We have to pay the high school $500?
Yes, sir.
For use of the auditorium?
Mm-hmm.
Right. All right. And that's basically what that is for. And that's a fee for them. They, they have their, they just their own pair of lights on, make sure everything's up and running and provide technical support throughout the concert. Questions, Mr. Smith?
Looks good to me.
That's great.
Okay. Mr. Smith, any questions? Mr. Platt, any questions?
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay. Very good. The last one is authorizing expenditure of funds for hosting the October Mobile County Municipal Association Monthly Meeting and Dinner. As you know, the association meets monthly at different cities on a rotating basis. This Thursdays, this month for August, is at Citronell at their community center. And our turn will be in October. Last year, we were the, our first time, we conducted our dinner at Isaiah City Church. It was a success. We'll be there again this year. We've already received permission for that and things are looking good. I think we're on track for that. And that will be Thursday in October, coming up, 7:00 P.M. Should be fun. Questions, Mr. Smith?
I look forward to, this is a chance to share Sims with everybody else in the county.
Okay.
Comment?
Okay. Mr. Webb?
Great.
Okay. Mr. Platt?
Just try to hold on to one of those cool months for us to host.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Every now and then, you can change the month you have. So if you're, if you're interested in changing, when people, sometimes cities drop out, that's how we were able to get on, a city dropped off. Because there are more cities than there are available months. I think by two, about two more than there are available months. So, we're glad to be in the rotation. I think for several years there, we didn't have, we didn't have to do much to show up. So it was good for us. And our, our dues will be due soon, but I think not till October. The dues are minimal. Very good. Next item, Ms. Committee Report, Financial Planning. Mr. Smith?
Yesterday afternoon, evening, the Finance Committee worked through the budget and I was delighted, and I would want to report that the work on the budget is not just about squeezing the dollars down, but actually some creative thought was stimulated and some ideas in terms of community outreach and working with the committee developed. And I think I will go forward with those recommendations to the council here as part of our budget. I believe we're on track to be able to produce a balanced budget here in a couple of weeks.
Very good. And the concept, of course, you know, we had two meetings in the month of September. We will present the budget for council to review at the first meeting in September. And then you will have two weeks to review that until the next meeting. And if you have any questions or issues. And then if it's approved by council, we will be done. We will have our budget for the next fiscal year, a long before 1 October, which of course is the way it should be. But we want to give the council plenty of time to review all the data and ask questions. Please encourage you to do so. All right. Anything else, Mr. Smith?
That's it for right now. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Webb? Don't worry, sir.
Any other full report or?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Okay. I have a report here that we're working on electronic signs for the library, preparing sign and advertisements for a bit. I guess that's specifications and whatever for the. And public work crews are working on several right-of-way projects, Ward's Lane and Kushle and Cloud. Thank you. Resurfacing, this is very encouraging here in spite of the God-given rain. The resurfacing has been, I mean, the roadwork has been held up because of, and yesterday, just before a big shower, they finished Red Creek Drive North. That's the one that runs right by my house. And lots of red dust and all and I thank Jason and his crew and the taxpayers for taking care of that surface and that. That's not a resurfacing. That's a brand-new pavement. And it looks really, really good. Nice and thick, much thicker than I thought it would be, but so be it. Red Creek Drive and Red Creek Drive North have been paved. And the intersection project, been held up due to the weather. Next step is to pave the south side and start the north side. Lots of rain, I've never seen it rain so often in my life. But I know that I'm not a road contractor, thank the Lord, and, but in spite of all of the rain they are doing, I think I've been. rain they are doing, I think I've done a very good job, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Smith?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Webb? Mr. Platt?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Moving on to Mr. Platt, Public Safety.
Public Safety, we're still doing the research on our emergency sirens for the city.
Right.
And I think Letitia's continuing to do that. And our safe room grant, you know, we had that approved, but it's been resubmitted for location change. Everybody is of the opinion that if we're going to have it at all, it needs to be somewhere where it's really useful, put it out at the training center so that our public safety and emergency people can, you know, have quick access to it. Also, we've purchased quite a bit of new equipment for the emergency preparedness. I don't have a list, but as we continue to have these discussions about, you know, emergency preparedness things come up, and a lot of the departments are buying these things out of their budget. We have another hurricane exercise. Rob, do you know when that is? Or Jason, do you know when we're gonna have another tabletop exercise?
I think the chief wanted to do another hurricane one next month.
Next month?
Yeah. But we haven't set it up yet.
All right. Well, I encourage all the council members to attend these if you can and see the results, you know, what comes out of it. We had a discussion with the SO about our crime, and we've got a committee, a few people on the committee that are looking into that. Second thing is brought up again, the discussion of the speed limit on Highway 98. And we have a meeting tomorrow. Is that still on with Department of Transportation? Talk with them about how we might have some success with doing that. And we have people talking and working with not only homeowners associations and such as that, but trying to get together and encourage a neighborhood watch program. And the last item that I'd like to mention is we have had some really good ideas coming from the younger people in the community. Y'all may remember that we had two young ladies propose these bicycle racks and paths and stuff like that. So, we're also looking at having, working at the schools and having some young people participate in some of these committees, particularly the Parks and Recreation.
Right.
But just tighten up our already pretty good relationship with the schools and try to listen to the kids and get them involved.
Yes, sir.
That's pretty much it, public safety.
Okay. And you also have Parks and Rec, did you want to?
Yeah, well, most of that was about Parks and Rec. The only different items there is, we had quite a few discussions about recognition for Mr. Shirey's service to the city. And we've considered a marker. And Rob, are you, Rob is following through on that?
Mm-hmm.
Locating and giving us a prize for a marker. And the discussion also thought that we might want to rename the lake or name the lake for Mr. Shirey. I know that he loved that lake, and he was always after the Public Works Department, trying to get them to get the, what was it? I call them weeds.
The weeds.
Yeah, that really disturbed him. Playground equipment that we've talked about forever and ever, that's pretty much finished. The Public Works Committee, you know how they, or not the Public Works Department, they're always looking for a way to save money, and lo and behold, they saved us about $20,000 by deciding to relocate it within the same park, but they wouldn't have to have the artificial turf. So, the committee decided to let them save that money, but spend it on more equipment for the kids. Jason, do you have anything to say about that equipment now or?
Not really. We're still working on cost estimates, and this is all part of that grant that we got for playgrounds. So, it's a 130 matching grant. So, that's part of the budget, line item budget was to pay for the playground out of the splash plan. So, we're working with two different companies to try to get some cost, and we will have to advertise that for bids as well.
Okay. Also, I know that we're working with the city attorney, trying to run down the owner of a piece of property there at the corner of Schillinger's and where the municipal park is, see if we can get permission for that sign. And the last thing to mention again concerns Mr. Shirey. Just before he passed away, he and I spent a couple of weeks off and on contacting people about suitable use for the property on Schillinger's Road. And Jerry had me call the Boy Scouts and can't really remember whoever, I think it's Boys' Club, Boys and Girls' Club, and never got a response. So, the suggestion came up that it would probably make a really good walking path park or dog park or something like that. So, we're looking into the feasibility of those two items. And Jason has said that with the cooler weather coming up, he might be able to find time, get city crews to clean it up. And that's even.
Good report, sir. Mr. Smith, questions?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions.
Mr. Webb, any questions? Very good. You've been busy.
Well, the people have, yeah.
Yeah, you've been busy. Two good reports, thank you. Are there any council, legal council or staff comments?
President, I'd like to make one comment. Put in right here. In the annexation, involved the annexation of Sweetbrier, that was initiated actually by one of our local citizens, a member of that community. This is a terrorist, by the way. I tried to catch up with their invite here today, but I'm not able to. But it was on her initiative. She came into this place and asked, I talked with her, and she said they want to be annexed in. And as it turns out, we're working with our attorney and city clerk to develop a better way of handling these situations. And so, this turned out to be a pilot run. I think we'll do a little deep briefing and see if there's any additional efficiencies we're working on. But right now, this same technique is being used for some of our other large subdivisions. That's in progress. But this is really a big deal, I think, for the city. People want it to be in. But I just wanted to let you all know, one of the ladies that signed this petition for this worked with the late Councilman Jerry Shirey in his office for many years. And she had seen him head out for our council meetings and had heard play-by-play on his, all of his work he did in annexation. So, that lady was very, very happy to sign in. Another lady who signed this petition worked with our mayor at the school. And she was very thankful because, when she was desperate, the mayor would give her some industrial strength Army coffee. So, this is a very fine subdivision. These are great people, and I just want to let you know about those little joys we have to give to those people.
Good comments. Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Council, legal, staff comments? Any other business?
I just wanted to, I'd like to say again, the way she begins everything and talks about the different events that you have, just say thanks.
Very good. You do a good job. Appreciate it. All right. Any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay. We are adjourned until 4:00 PM. All right, everybody. It is... It is 4:04. The regular city council session is now called to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Here.
Councilmember Platt.
Here.
Councilmember LaShie, that's right.
Very good. Again, Mr. LaShie is working at the poll today for the election. And again, to remind everybody, you still have till 7:00 PM to vote. Please go do that. We would ask, if possible, Mr. Byrd, would you do the pledge of allegiance? And Mrs. Byrd, would you do the invocation? Would it be all right?
No.
Okay. Mrs. Byrd's up first.
Father, we thank you that you're our God, that you're King of kings and Lord of lords. We thank you, Father, that you're concerned about everything that concerns us, for your word says that you know the very number of hairs on our head, and you know when even a bird falls to the ground. Father, we asked you for wisdom today for all that is done and said, "Help us to see things as you see them." And we thank you for safety and protection for all families here, especially for our police department and our fire department, Lord, to keep them safe. And we thank you for this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you both. Appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of minutes for the regular council session of August 1st, 2017. You have those in your packet. You have minutes for those if you wish.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved from the regular session of August 1st, 2017. Do we have any presentation or guest speaker?
Yes.
All right. Next item is the official approval of checks for signature. I believe we discussed this in the work session. Is there anyone on council who has not reviewed the checks? Anyone?
I move we approve.
Second.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am, sorry, go ahead.
You had asked that I bring up one particular check. It's on...
Yes.
The back of the check detail. To probate court of Medell County. This is a $2,000 check. And what it's for is, when we do annexations here, once they're approved, I have to take those official ordinances, the maps that show how they're contiguous to the city, and the petitions that were signed by the property owners. And I have to take all those paperwork, all that paperwork down to probate court, record each individual sheet of paper, and they charge $2.50 per page recorded, plus $3 on the end. And it's necessary to record those, especially since our ordinance spelled out that it's not an official record until it's recorded at probate. And it's also the same for election materials and so on. I just wanted to explain it in case anybody had any questions. There's some annexations we had amended from the past, and I have about 900 sheets of paper to record. And so, the check's a little over $2,000 for that one set. So, I just wanted to offer an explanation, and if anybody has any questions, just let me know.
And thank you, because that's a lot of money, but it is, of course, important. That's required. Are there any questions on that particular check?
Major and holiday charge for our city clerk.
There probably will be one.
It took me a minute to get all those together, too.
Yeah. Mr. Smith, any questions on that?
No, thank you for the explanation.
Mr. Webb, question on that?
No.
Mr. Platt?
No question, but a comment, just to show you just what all Randy does for us. I mean, it's a lot of work.
Good point. Thank you for explaining that for me.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, again, is there a motion for approval of checks?
Checking.
Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. Very good. The checks are approved for August 15th. Moving on. Ordinances. The ordinances, items A through H, I need a motion for immediate consideration for these annexations. Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. Very good. We will take these ordinances in turn, one subdivision at a time, now that they've been accepted. We will see if they are going to be approved. First ordinance is ordinance A, an ordinance to annex certain properties into the corporate limits of the City of Sims, Sweetbrier subdivision. Is there any additional discussion or question on that? Anyone?
President, I move we approve.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. Okay. The next one is, an ordinance to annex certain properties into the corporate limits of the City of Sims, Byrd Bradley South McCary Road. Are there questions or discussions on this ordinance?
Move we approve.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. The next item is items, ordinance C, an ordinance to annex certain properties into the corporate limits of the City of Sims, Holmes, Ashley, Commedia Place. Any discussion or questions?
Move we approve.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. Next item is an ordinance to annex certain properties into the corporate limits of the City of Sims, Johnson, Donald Lee, and France, Commedia Place. Any questions or comments?
Move we approve.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. Next one is an ordinance to annex certain properties into the corporate limits of the City of Sims, Kruzuski, Herman, and Ann W. Olin Drive. Any discussions on that?
I move we approve.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. The next one is an ordinance to annex certain properties into the corporate limits of the City of Sims, LaShie, Jason P., Lot Road. Any discussion?
Move we approve.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts. Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. The next is an ordinance to annex certain properties into the corporate limits of the city of Sims, Mohammed Tariq J. and Amanda B. Joella Road. Any discussion?
Move, we approve.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. Next is an ordinance to annex certain properties into the corporate limits of the city of Sims, Mohammed Amanda on Jola Road. Jola Road. Any discussion?
Move, we approve.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. Are we good? City clerk, is that-
Yes.
Good. Okay. Moving right along. Resolutions. We have resolutions 9A, 8. They will require a motion for immediate consideration.
Move.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Yes. Oh.
All right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. Very good. We'll take each in turn. Resolution 9A is disposition of certain surplus or unneeded city personal property. In this case, we're talking about the pumper truck. I believe Captain Mack elaborated on that during the work session. Are there questions regarding the pumper truck and the reserve amount for that, which I believe was $30,000? Are there any questions, Mr. Smith?
No questions.
What year is the truck?
2000.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I remember.
Any questions? Any other questions? Mr. Webb, question?
No.
Mr. Platt?
No, sir.
Okay. Very good. Is there a motion approved?
So move. Second.
Okay. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts. Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. Very good. The next one is authorizing agreement between the city of Sims and the Alabama Department of Transportation relating to a transportation alternatives project. This is project number TAP MB-GA-18-901. Are there any questions or comments on this particular TAP grant, 9B?
I have a question, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Has a contractor been scheduled for this yet? Do we have a particular contractor or was we put it out for bid?
This has to go out for bid.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. That's a good question. I'll check them out.
What is the, what's the, what's the work going to be?
Um, one of them is from Fire Tower for a short distance. And it's just a regular ADA compliant sidewalk. And then the rest of it is about eight to nine feet wide. And it will go from where that one ends up to Walmart. And I have the cost if you want to see those.
That's just in item B?
Well, both A and B. I'm not sure which project number, kind of which, the-
B and C.
Yeah, B and C, I'm sorry.
Yeah, B and C.
B is 901 and C is 948.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I'd really like to see some cost figures on this before we go forward. I think we need to have something to work on. Tells us how much money we're committing to here.
Here are the estimated city funds.
Okay. If you look on the board, you'll see that it's, I believe it's an 80/20. And that shows the city funds committed to each project. As you can see, most of it is funded by the federal government.
Does that satisfy you?
Well, since we've been so involved with our budgeting and looking at the way these ones are allocated, I'm just trying to picture in my mind how this would fit in and how it would affect, how it preempt other things. Let's see, this is one job for $50,000 and the other one is-
Basically, the, the, I'm sorry.
If you think it's satisfactory, I'm going to second it. But I don't know what you still want to hold up.
Where did these cost estimates come from?
Jason, probably.
Yeah. Jason put this together.
Gathered it.
We could still-
What's the other?
I would like to see what's in bid.
Okay.
This is just estimated based on the mileage of sidewalk to square footage. And then this agreement was written by the state from the Alabama Department of Transportation. This agreement was drafted by them.
So, this one's $50,000 and the other one's about-
I believe you said it's about the same.
About the same. So, we're talking about $100,000 coming out of our accounts here.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
$100,000 and total package is about $500,000. So, again, it's about 20%. It's an 80/20. That's what there is that we pursue it.
Well, I'm sorry. Since we're so much working on the figures and everything, I'm in shock since we sort of got everything balanced and, you know, see how this, whoa, this takes $100,000 away from the other things we already figured. So, I thought we were right at the verge of getting a budget together. But I see we'll have to go back to the drawing board for them to do that.
I am bitterly opposed to building a sidewalk from Walmart, a sidewalk.
Okay.
It does not make sense to me.
Comment, please. Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
I can understand everybody's concern with the cost and such as that. But the trend is for walkability. And we already have a traffic problem. If we can get people off of the asphalt, onto the concrete, we're going to be so much better off. If people can walk and ride the bikes, that's what they want. That's what they're looking for. And we're just going to have to eat the price. I mean, I understand what y'all are saying, but this needs to be done. And you haven't been truly shocked yet because I haven't talked to you about the new fire equipment.
And that's not expensive.
Yeah.
Inexpensive.
Yeah, you ain't seen it.
And I think to elaborate on that, I mean, you see, you see as cities develop and as cities grow, you want to try to connect your shopping centers. And right now, as you're well aware, we have basically two shopping centers. They're connected by a road, but they're not connected so that individuals can walk, although it is a bit of a walk. But the idea is theoretically, if the weather's nice, if you're at a HEPA or you're up there near the CVS or anywhere near the library, you could walk on a pleasant day safely all the way from a HEPA to Walmart and do your shopping, walk back. It's going to be big enough for bicycles, it's going to be big enough for people to walk on. Basically, it's an effort to connect people. And as I think Mr. Smith said, we need to get people out of cars. Part of the problem that Alabama has in general is that we don't have a robust public transportation system. A few cities do. And we don't have a train system. And pretty much, everybody goes everywhere by car, even if it's across the street to get a quarter mill. So, if we can encourage people to walk, I think it's a good thing. If we can encourage people to bike, I think it's a good thing. One of the ways you stay alive in this world, as Mr. Webb knows, stay busy. And you do. You're one of the busiest men, I know.
Thank you.
And-
That's Randy, Governor.
Yeah. And he never slows down.
Mr. President, I think we're all for that and all for it. I think I'd like to ask, can we table this for 30 days so that everybody can study a little bit more and get on-
That's fine.
And understand what we're doing there.
We can do that.
What we need to consider, too, is we need, I'd rather spend $100,000 in the fire department than all the-
Okay. Well, is there a motion to table?
I move.
Items B and C?
Second.
Yeah. Okay. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. We will table items B and C because it elicited some good conversation and good questions, and I think that's good. So, good point, Mr. Webb.
Good point.
Want to make sure we look at this carefully. And you brought up some good points about it. So, we'll take another hard look at this, okay? Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on. Authorizing an agreement between the city of Sims and Government Revenue Solutions. This is RDS. As you know, RDS has been collecting our taxes. This is for the rental and lease taxes for, since long as we've been in the city. The agreement is about to come up for renewal. I think that the amount charged by RDS is reasonable. Many, many cities use RDS. I've found them to be easy to work with. And when you call them, they quickly answer the phone. So, I'm satisfied with the work so far. The city clerk works with them almost on a daily basis. Is that about right? And I think, of course, you can speak for yourself, but I think the city clerk is comfortable with RDS. We have a good relationship with them. So, I would support continuing this agreement for another street year. Comments? Questions? I would certainly defer.
I move, we approve.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Um, can I say-
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Uh, is this like the internal revenue? Does it collect taxes or is this re- I've got the other copies, so I'm kind of all-
Well, yeah, RDS is a, it's a private business, private corporation that collects-
I thought it was like internal revenue.
Well, they work the same way the state of Alabama does, but they specialize in collecting revenue for cities. Taxes, business license fees, and they perform audit services as well.
Well, I was just going to ask you what Mayor Baker said, that they called back, you know, quickly. I was wondering if I could use my name with the city of Sims to call them the internal revenue or something. This could get a quick phone call back.
Yes, sir.
I don't know.
This is a private corporation.
You have to wait and go through 20 people to, but anyway.
Can't help you with that.
I'm sorry about that.
The IRS is above my pay grade, so I don't know. Very good. Are there any questions, other questions regarding RDS? As we spent-
We were voting, so we didn't ask if we were.
Okay. Okay.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.